Welcome to the regular council meeting. This is Tuesday, August the 29th, 301. We're going to call the meeting to order, invocation by Councilmember Jeff Darby, and the Pledge of Allegiance followed up by Councilmember Kristina.
Father, thank you for this time that you've allowed us to see. Thank you for this day. Thank you for those who are here. Father, we thank you for those who serve others. We so blessed to have officers who put their lives on the line. We thank you, Lord, for that family. We pray for every person in the sound of my voice. We ask that you meet their needs. Lord, give us direction today to do those things that bring glory to your name. It's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, real call.
Mr. Montgomery, absent. Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and debarment at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record, and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council, shall be forthwith by the present pro tempore, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the city marshals as sergeant-at-arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
Chief Hagen, we're going to go ahead and let you start the show.
Afternoon, counsel, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to recognize a few people of our department. As most of you all, I'm sure, remember, May 2nd was a horrific day in our community. Evil decided to stop and visit our town, and because of a certain amount of people, several few people within our department, we were able to put that to rest pretty quickly. Before I go any further with that, I do want to recognize there was a couple of people that day that actually lost their lives, so we do not want to forget them, obviously. As you can see by the showing of support for everybody that showed up, that's just a small portion of the amount of people that we had come to our rescue on that day. Sheriff's Department, other local agencies, state police, all of them came to our assistance, and for that, we are definitely grateful. But with that being said, there's a very few officers, a certain amount of officers, that just went above and beyond, and I felt it necessary to be able to recognize them, be able to do it in a public setting, so everybody knows what a great job that they did. For first, I'm going to call up Sergeant Freeman. Come on up here, and Officer Kenny Gallion. They've told me numerous times, we don't need this, please. But these two officers, I'm going to read something real quick, just to kind of let you all know what we're doing. They're going to be issued the Medal of Valor. This is the second highest award within our police department. There's only one more above that, and unfortunately for that one, I hope we never have to issue it, and includes loss of life to an officer, so I hope we never have to deal with that. As far back as I could find within the police department records, this medal has never been issued. So these two officers, as far as I could find in records, are going to be the very first two to get it. What our policy states for this is this is awarded for exceptional bravery at imminent risk of serious bodily injury, the recipient demonstrating exceptional courage above and beyond the call of duty by performing a course of actions in an extremely dangerous situation. And I could not find a better word to say what these two officers did than what our policy wrote in order to receive this award. So on behalf of that, there, I'm going to show it to you all. Their Medal of Valor is encased in a plaque, and it's got down here, it just says, "For extraordinary valor above and beyond the call of duty, May 2nd, 2023." that day, and I'm not going to go into great detail into what they had to do and what they had to see, but just exceptional bravery and what they had to deal with that day. So awesome job. We do have an officer that's actually out of the country right now. Him and another officer were next arriving. I'm going to, we'll do a little ceremony for him at a separate date and time whenever he comes back, but the next officer, Officer Danny Bo Turner. And we have a civilian that was involved too, Wes Davis. So Officer Turner was one of the next arriving officers after the initial two. Upon his arrival, he found Mr. Davis knelt down behind his truck, had a gunshot wound to him, immediately went to work on him. In my mind, talking to the fire department, the nurses, the doctors, typically, or I say typically, he did save this man's life. The reason that he received that gunshot wound was because he got in the midst of that battle with those police officers and tried to stop the guy that was on that scene. So without him, there's no telling how much worse it would have been. He jumped right up in the middle of it, tried to do what he needed to do, and I definitely think that deserves an award, and that's the reason that you're here. So for Mr. Davis, we have a plaque here, and I'll let you see it as well, but it says, "James Wes Davis, in recognition of your exceptional bravery in the face of extreme danger." And that's exactly what he faced that day, so. And for Officer Bo Turner, I'm going to read his, too. His awards are life-saving award, and it says, "Officer Danny Bo Turner, in recognition of your courageous and life-saving actions at the scene of an officer-involved shooting on May 2nd, 2023 in Bossier City, Louisiana, you put yourself in harm's way to save another human life with dedication and courage." Thanks, everybody, for coming. I think you all can tell just by the amount of showing that we had show out what it meant to not only myself, but my department and the officers that are here. So thank you.
All right, ready for our city attorney to give us an update on the Attorney General's opinion?
Mr. President, the Attorney General's correspondence was not an opinion. At the last meeting, a resolution was passed to request an opinion from the Office of the Attorney General to weigh in or to give the opinion on whether the petition that has been presented to the council requesting a referendum or an ordinance as to term limits, whether that petition was properly or improperly certified due to certain lack of information that is required by the election code, namely, that's revised statute 18:3, and the information that is missing from that petition is the year of birth of each signer or signatory of that petition. We received correspondence back from the Attorney General's office late last week, I believe it was last Thursday, where the Attorney General has declined to give an opinion citing a conflict pursuant to 18:4, the Attorney General acts as general counsel for all the registrar of voters, parish by parish, in the state of Louisiana. Therefore, citing that conflict, they said that they would not give, they've declined to give an opinion, and that leads us, leaves us in exactly the same place that we were two weeks ago, which is, you know, is the petition that started this process, is it fatally flawed? Again, I've given my opinion. Ms. Bell has given her opinion that due to that lack of information that is not in the petition for any signatory that I can find, does, is the, is that effort, you know, is that petition, is that a fatal flaw? And that is the first question that has to be answered, in my opinion. If the city were to go forward and place something on the ballot, or attempt to place something on the ballot, then that issue will never go away. A year from now, two years from now, 10 years from now, any interested party, well, not a qualified elector, a voter, registered voter in the city of Bossier, could come up and challenge the term limits, you know, as annulity. That is, you know, if Mr. Smith or Mr. Hammond, 10 years from now, when they've served three terms, they decide they want another one, then they could be entitled, they, you know, they could file a lawsuit asking that the term limit provision as presented to the City Council should be set aside and declared annulity. You know, it, any City Council member could do it, the mayor could do it, or any qualified elector, or somebody who's validly registered to vote in Bossier City. So that is the first and foremost issue that must be addressed. Pursuant now, we have a petition in front of the City Council that, that is purports to be certified. It was certified by the registrar of voters. Whether that was done, again, I feel it was improper. The outside council feels that it was improper. The Attorney General has declined to weigh in on that issue. So at this point in time, my advice to the City Council would be, and to the city, would be to request that the registrar of voters for Bossier Parish decertify the petition due to the lack of information in the petition. And then I think what the registrar of voters would do, she would seek her own opinion, and, you know, and depending on that, she would either choose to decertify or not. So until this issue is solved, I just, I don't see how anything can move forward. It would always be subject to litigation. If the City Council chooses basically to do nothing, then they could be subject to some type of mandamus action on behalf of any qualified elector in the city of Bossier. And so that's also suggestive of litigation. So my, my advice now to the City Council would be to approach the registrar of voters, ask her to decertify the petition. If she's not comfortable doing that, then seek her own outside legal opinion, so she feels that she's, and come back with, you know, with, with her chosen course of action. Until that, until this issue is solved, it, anything that is done pursuant to this petition is going to be the subject of litigation. So that's my opinion. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I've got one, Mr. President. So are we saying that the, that she is not qualified to do her job when she looked at this petition? Is that what we're, is that what we're saying?
Pursuant to the law, Mr. Hammond, the petition lacks information that is, that is mandatory pursuant to 18:3. The election code says that in order for the registrar of voters to certify a petition of this type, not a petition concerning the sale of alcohol, then it must contain the year of birth. It doesn't contain the year of birth, so everybody makes mistakes. Again, I feel that it was improperly certified.
I thought that was, the date of birth was for a state petition and not a local municipality.
Any petition other than something that's found in Title 26 that concerns the sale of alcohol is required to be certified, but that is required to be certified by the registrar of voters must contain certain information. And though there, there are basically seven or eight things that are found in 18:3, year of birth is mandatory. It says it shall contain this information. The petition before the council does not.
Any additional questions from the council? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Ryan Haygood, 2136 Airline Drive, Bossier. This has never been about the truth or the will of the voter. It's been about how do we keep this off the ballot at any cost? The voters want this, and you're looking for ways to not let it happen. What kind of excuses can we throw up in the air to make this not stick? How do we throw this off the ballot if we can't obey the will of the voters? And that's just not the way the city government should be run. It's just not. You all are better people than this. We deserve better government than this. The ballot is certified by the registrar of voters, and now you've got a commitment to vote on it, let the voters pass this bill. They'll do it overwhelmingly. It'll be a 90% win. Let it happen. You're picking things like, there's no date of birth. Well, what do you think a voter ID contains? What do you think a voter ID contains? If I had that kind of legal opinion, I'd fire my attorney. I just would. Thank you.
Hello, Wes Marriott, Sogo Live, 4308 Clarkway Drive. Just quickly to address the specific item on the agenda of Mr. Jacobs' commentary. Title 18, subsection 3, does state, notwithstanding any other provision of law to the contrary. And before we even talk about what shall be in the certification or in the petition, it says, "Notwithstanding any other provision of the law." The Bossier City Charter gives the provisions of how this petition should be carried out. And I believe that if you look at 18:3, A, notwithstanding any other provision of law to the contrary, every petition submitted to a registrar of voters for certification shall contain the following information. It does say "shall contain," but it also says, "Notwithstanding any other provision of law." The Bossier City Charter and its organizers did their due diligence when they decided what information needed to be in a petition that amends the charter. Thank you.
Nate Jeter Senior, 400 Columbia Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana. You know, I've been knowing a registrar voter for over 20 years. There's one thing that I'm absolutely certain about, is how competency to do her job and her ability to research any issue. The issue of the day is that the citizens of Bossier have put their name on a petition and asked this council that represents them to make a decision, not to shut it up or down, but to put it on the ballot to allow the rest of the citizens of Bossier to have their say on this issue. That's what we're asking. That's what the citizens want. That's why they signed the petition. I believe this body of government, if you're representing the will of the people, then you should act according to the will of the people. That's why our charter gives us that option. The charter gives us an option to be able to petition to our council when we want to see change. The citizens have made their feelings very, very known, and we respectfully are asking that this body would not ignore the will of the people. Are over 3,000 people that signed the petition, are over the 2,000 that the registrar of voters certified as valid signatures on this petition? Let the will of the people go for it. Let this go to ballot, and if the people want it, then let's move forward. This is not about a charter commission or a charter review. Those things can happen down the road. This is specifically about what the will of the people want with respect to this issue. And to disregard the will of the people would be saying, "I don't represent you," and that's not what this council is about. Thank you very much.
David Crockett, 653 Dumein Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Wow, so much has already been said. Yes, it was certified. Bossier Term Limits Coalition followed the guidance that we sought and were given by the registrar. The Secretary of State, I followed this brochure to the T. So I did everything that I was able to get guidance from, in the state, in the city, and through any research that I could get. I talked to the registrar, or the Secretary of State, twice, asked them what needed to be on a petition. They said, "Follow the proposition packet that's in here." I have some quotes, "But to criticize our petition because it isn't in the form of an ordinance," that was a ludicrous argument. "It was written clearly with the intent to amend the city charter. Call it an ordinance or an amendment to the charter, the intent is to limit councilmen to three terms for a lifetime by adding text to the charter. It was written to be compliant with RS 1299.1 that states that the governing authority or the organization submitting a question or proposition will be simple, unbiased, concise, and easily understood language." That's what our petition did. We knew that this guidance needed to be followed in our petition, or it wouldn't make it on the ballot. That's why it was written that way. This is an example of a Bossier City ordinance, right here. It says, "Whereas this, whereas that, whereas this, whereas that, now therefore be it ordained, be it further ordained, simple, unbiased, concise, and easily understood, it is not." That's not what you put in a petition. It was a ludicrous argument that was given to the city. Louisiana statutes clearly place more responsibility on the governing authority to implement our petition than the city's argument assumes. RS 1284 states that the election shall be ordered by resolution of the governing authority of the political subdivision, which shall state the purpose for which it's called and the preparation of the propositions to be submitted to the voters at such an election shall be the responsibility of the governing authority. So this is the people saying, "We want term limits." Our petition accomplished the task of proposing change to the charter at whatever legal format the City Attorney, City Council, and thank you for your support, Mayor. We really appreciate your stepping forward on this. We argue, and we will talk, I guess, later on about charter commission. We don't think it's the time for a charter commission when the city is in this much turmoil over something that is so important to the citizens of Bossier City. To put anything else in front of the people is a farce, but thank you for letting me comment.
Counsel, I just got a text from our IT department, and the streaming is down, the internet, there have been internet issues, the streaming's down, but it's actually still being recorded, so it will be uploaded later this evening, as we always upload it to our YouTube channel, so. They're working on it. IT is working on it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, come on.
My name is Alice Boyer. I live in Holland, Louisiana. I just wanted to say that I actually sent emails to each and every one of you all, and I want to say thank you to the ones that actually respond. That accounts for three people on this council. And I do want to thank you, Mayor, for attending to this matter, because everybody in this community is interested in it. You know, there's no misunderstanding. It seems like there's some legal gymnastics going on, and, you know, the people probably wouldn't be so concerned about this if it wasn't because of the things that occur on this, on this council. Y'all are over budget on everything. There's no accountability. There's money for monuments, tennis courts, but not for the police. To be perfectly honest, there are a lot of people that would probably want some of you all fired today. And I just want to say that you don't need to put it on the ballot. I think y'all have actually gone past y'all's time limit anyway, on being able to vote on this. In that way, that saves y'all from being embarrassed. I think that the Attorney General probably decided to save face instead of giving an opinion on this matter because of the ridiculousness of it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, we're going to move forward. Entertaining motion to approve the minutes of August 15th, 2023, regular council meeting dispensed with the ruling.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Any questions from the audience on this? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Counsel, I have one request for an add-on for today. It'll be new business number 12, adopted resolution, asking for the Bossier Parish registrar of voters to decertify the petition from the Bossier Term Limits Coalition. Call for a special election for term limits for the Bossier City Council and the Bossier City Mayor due to the petition failing to meet all the requirements of Louisiana revised statute 18:3. This will be a first and final reading, and the item is being requested to be added on due to the time sensitivity of the matter.
All right, counsel, entertaining motion to add this to the agenda.
I make a motion, we add this to today's agenda. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion fails, so it'll automatically be on the agenda for the next council meeting. Motion to approve the agenda?
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda, the agenda, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Public hearing, actions on unfinished business, adopt an ordinance amending the 2023 general fund engineering budget by $20,000, increasing expenditures for demolitions in the property standards division, final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, I've got one, Mr. President. Mr. Oshinbach, do you think, you think this is going to get you all through the rest of the year? Are you all going to need to be coming back for more on that? Are y'all going to need to be coming back for more on this?
It's hard to say, Councilman Hammond. We believe that this will get us through the end of the year. We've got several on docket. It takes time to get these through, so the expectation being that when it comes to 2024, those that finalize the process will have funding available then, but we tried to look in our crystal ball, and this is what we've come up with. Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Brian, I can tell you Roger, with the property standards, keeps pretty good track of this.
Yes.
And on the people in the administrative court, we have, you know, he lets us know that, so we keep track of that too, Ben.
Thank y'all. Additional questions?
Mr. Hammond, is yours up?
No, I'm a yay.
Adoption ordinance appropriating 175,000 to cover project costs for lighting improvements at the city municipal complex in reference to Louisiana Public Service Commission Public Entity Energy Efficiency Grant, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adoption ordinance appropriating the sum of $4 million from the 2018 LCDA bond fund to provide a new Bossier City Senior Center, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience?
Good afternoon, Tamara Crane with Bossier Council on Aging. What I am passing out is it was asked some kind of basic data of what is done in Bossier City versus Bossier Parish. And I had presented this information back at one of our committee meetings, but I did want to show y'all the breakdown, and I kind of realized that some of these may not make a lot of sense to y'all, so I kind of want to hit the highlights. But this is what we submit to the Governor's Office of Elderly Affairs every month, along with quarterly and annual reports to them, to show how we're using our federal and state funding. So what I've done with this graph, though, is this is Bossier City only. So I have fiscal year 19 and 20, just to show y'all what we were doing before COVID, and then fiscal year 23 for us ends June 30. This is Bossier City only in those three, and then I have year end for the parish. So the percent that you're seeing there is the percent of what we do that's only in Bossier City of the whole parish. So you can see C2, that's our home-delivered meals. 50% of all the home-delivered meals we do is in Bossier City limits. 84% of our homemaker service is within Bossier City limits. When we go down to look at transportation, we have medical transportation, including Medicaid, at more than 62%. And the way down at the bottom, we have 3B transportation, which is getting people back and forth to our sites, which is 69% of the transportation we provide. So when we look at the parish versus the city, there are some things that we do more of within the Bossier City limits. So I just kind of want to show y'all that, and then I did kind of break it down to show y'all. C1 means our meals that we serve at that Bearcat location. C2 is that home-delivered meal concept. 3B is kind of all that fun stuff. It's coming and having games and recreation, exercise, material aid, anything that's kind of like just extra land yap stuff. CRG is our caregiver, where we go in and provide actual respite care. So again, what you're seeing on this pie is things done specifically in Bossier City. So I just want to kind of give y'all that information, and I can answer any more questions detailed about what we do within the city versus the parish.
Thank you.
And thank y'all again for this final reading.
All right, additional comments from the audience? Questions on the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, my same question from last time. It's not that I am not against building a new council on aging, but we still have several tasks. We don't know where it's going, we don't have a plan, and we don't know how much it's going to cost. And...
Mr. President, if I may, to answer Councilman Hammond's question.
Do I?
You done?
Yeah, for right now.
Go ahead.
I can address this question, and that is, again, we were asking our colleagues at the parish to match some funds, and so the administration before formally sending a letter to the parish wanted us to go ahead and appropriate some money. And so in the committee meetings, we are still discussing where exactly we're interested in either building or buying a property and rehabbing and what it all looks like. This is merely so we can start getting money from other agencies, and we also, the CAO, I believe, is going to be submitting capital outlay requests to the state as well. So I would be shocked if the city has to be on the hook for all 4 million of this when it's all said and done. This is just for us to kind of start getting the ball rolling.
Well, going back to my original statement, not to argue with you or disagree with you, building costs are going up. Right now, as we speak, everything is increasing, and I'm sure Mr. Oshinbach could stand up here and agree with me. Everything is going up. We have no idea how much money we need people to match. The parish loves for us to appropriate money, but it's always seems harder to get money out of them. So like I said before, I would, me personally, I would love to see a plan on this building and see where we stand on this and get some kind of cost analysis before we go any further on this.
Well, that's why we had to back up, Brian, because the last plan was 7.2 million, and I know we couldn't afford that, so...
I couldn't hear you.
The last plan we got was 7.2 million, so I know we couldn't afford that. So we are, you know, it's like us starting over again, trying to find something, but we are working on it.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Darby, but this is just appropriating our sum if we get down the road and we can't make this come to fruition. We're not obligating the city to 4 million dollars. We're just setting money aside for future plans.
Exactly.
Because the money is there, and we don't want someone else to spend the money.
Exactly. We need to do this in order to make sure that the project takes place. It's not going to take place right away, but we have to put this in place now. That's a reality.
The jury asked us to do this, to go ahead and do an ordinance for it. The jury asked us to do that.
Yeah, the police jury has been contacted to ask to partner with us on this, but they require us to give some type of concrete commitment, and so this is it. One more question, Mr. President. Angela, could you happen to know what the balance is or how much money is left on this 2018 LCDA bond?
There was 11 million unobligated, so after this 4 million, it'll be 7 million unobligated.
And if I'm correct, out of this LCDA bond, we still have to complete the Carriage Way?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Unless they decide to get funds from elsewhere.
Thank you.
Additional comments from the council?
Should pop up. Motion carries.
All right, new business?
Adoption ordinance amending ordinance number 133 of 2018 by changing the zoning classification of a certain tract of land being 4.134 acres, more or less, from residential agriculture to B3 general business for word of ministries located at 1790 Swan Lake Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. And this is a first and final reading, and it's favorable by MPC.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution announcing the intention of the Bossier City Council to start the process of selecting a charter review commission, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Name and address?
West Marriott 4308 Parkway Drive. Today, I have the unfortunate task of peeling back the layers of political doublespeak that members of the city council and our city attorney have and will present, and try to do so in only three minutes. Let me get straight to the point. The resolution offered today by Mr. Darby is a political, calculated haymaker aimed directly at the Bossier Term Limits Coalition. The council and the city attorney have decided to ignore the petition that was lawfully certified by the registrar voters and are now making a mockery of the charter they swore to uphold. We witnessed an incredible movement, a grassroots effort that, for the first time in Bossier City's history, sought to change city charter by way of the people. Over 2,900 certified signatures on the termless petition reflect a desire for change. Yet what have we seen in response? A surreptitious move cloaked in the facade of supporting term limits presenting itself in the form of a charter commission resolution. Councilman Darby's submission on the surface seems to embrace term limits, but his resolution allowed to pass will lead to a diluted version of term limits, stripped of the retroactive clause that would hold incumbents accountable and make room for progress, not to mention the years it could take for the commission to do its work or if it resolves to do anything at all. Let me be clear, the termless petition has been lawfully certified and delivered, and the charter dictates that we must pass an ordinance or place the matter on a ballot. The law leaves no room for ambiguity, and yet again, the termless petition is being pushed aside, just like the will of the voters has been pushed aside many times in this council. It is indeed a grievous injustice when officials elected to serve bend and twist the law to their convenience, but what is far worse is the lawless actions of the city council actively choosing to ignore this petition and the will of the people. Mr. President, if you or colleagues don't have the resolve to vote down this measure, then I ask that you simply table it for 30 minutes and vote on the mayor's resolution first. The mayor has again placed a resolution for term limits on the agenda, and if you truly support this, you can vote for that item. Any action other than supporting the mayor's resolution reveals the council is not merely obstructionist, but is agents actively undermining the democratic process. In closing, Mr. President, I demand each member of this council peer introspectively into the foundations of your conscience and choose now to either serve the people of Bossier and listen to their voice, or to continue to serve as political pawns of the powers that be. You cannot have two masters. Do not vote for this commission. Thank you.
David Crockett, 653 Dumein Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. So charter commission, why now? I stand in opposition to the resolution. If it passes, I recommend that the mayor veto the resolution at the first step to allow more public debate on whether we would have a charter commission now. Why is it appropriate now? Then, if his argument doesn't prevail, the mayor is in a powerful position to delay a charter commission until a new council is formed after the next election. I'll explain. The council has had 20 years to amend the charter, and only when the public makes amendments, you take action. You've had plenty of time. Are we expected to give you 20 more years to get it done? Mr. President, the tide is changing in Bossier City. I feel that the timing of the charter commission makes more sense at the beginning of a new term rather than the end of a current term, especially when the council is possibly changing due to term limits. Be warned, today, Bossier City Council is infringing on the mayor's existing powers and his ability to hire city staff and to fill vacancies as stated in the charter. Your existing ordinance restricting the mayor is in clear violation of the charter. If the council does not follow the charter now, why should the public believe that the council will suddenly decide that it's going to follow the charter commission? According to the resolution, the commission shall consist of nine appointed persons, and it further states that should the proposed charter commission not be approved by a majority of the vote of the council, said commission cannot be established. This is a requirement that puts the mayor in a powerful position. The mayor could simply delay appointing members of the charter commission, as we've been kind of been delayed with our charter, with our petition. Mr. President, I fear that Bossier City Council is pushing a charter commission to change the rules that no doubt will give the council more power and may legalize the restrictions you have placed on the mayor or make it more difficult for a petition of the government. Bossier City Term Limits Coalition doesn't agree with any effort to change the intent of term limits as stated in our petition and to affect the next election. That's the intent. Bossier Term Limits Coalition will campaign against any attempt to make a petition more difficult in the future. We will campaign against the charter commission, be it known. Finally, to win any legal argument about the petition, which is what this is about, you will have to argue that voter ID is an inadequate means to identify the correct voter and to verify the signatures, which is what the registrar did. To argue so would be viewed by your constituents as an attempt to thwart the right of every elector in the city that wants to have a voice. And thank you for letting me comment. Appreciate it, Mr. President.
Lee A. Jeter, senior, 400 Columbia Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana. When I found out through the agenda that this item was coming up before this council today, the first thing I asked was why. And then I look back and I see every constitution amendment, every election, we've got all these constitution amendments on the ballot. And the reason we have a lot of these constitutional amendments on the ballot each year is because our state legislators know that they can't get a consensus if we try to have a constitutional convention. There are going to be things that are going to be missed. I agree that this council has ample opportunity, if there was something in the charter that needed to be amended or revised, that we could have made that ordinance through this council and revised those things. This council is the very people that will appoint the charter commission. If this council is divided on issues right now, how are we ever going to come to agreement on something that's written in the charter that the average citizen is not going to have any say on because the majority of the council commission, those that are going to be appointed, are appointed by this body? It's going to be divided. It's not going to be a win situation for the citizens. Let's put this aside, let's do away with the smokescreen, and let's go ahead and vote on the issues that the citizens want. And then I agree, if we need to have something looked at in the charter in the future, if there is something drastically wrong with our charter, let's put an ordinance together and let's correct what's wrong with the charter instead of reviewing the whole charter and deluding everything that the citizens of this great city want. I just appeal to this council, for once, let's listen to the voters. Let's hear their voice. Let their voice be heard and act upon the voice of the voters, because they've made their decision, and they've stated to this council what they would like to see happen. Thank you very much.
Additional comments from the council? From the public? Any questions from the council? Yes, sir.
I'm going to keep it short and sweet. My name is Ronald Cheatham, 1923, Ross City Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I'm not a politician, but I do know that every one of you that I'm looking at is supposed to be working for the citizens. I'm a citizen. These people are citizens. And you falling down on your jobs. Amen.
Yeah, I do, Mr. President. Year and a half ago, myself, along with Councilman Smith, had an ordinance drawn up. It was on the agenda for a charter commission a year and a half ago, before any of this petition, any of this even came to prevail. Our ordinance was removed off of the agenda, but now, all of a sudden, we need a charter I just, somebody can explain to me why we need it now, and we didn't need it a year and a half ago? I'm... year and a half ago, I'm willing to listen.
Mr. President, I would like to ask the clerk if she can recollect, did we have on the agenda an ordinance for a charter commission?
There was one that was proposed on the agenda, and then the city attorney had asked me to remove it.
And that was what year?
That was 2022. That was last year.
Did, did, did he give you a reason for that?
I'd have to go back and check, check the emails, but I'd gotten an email from him and asked him, asked me to remove it at that time. I believe there was a question about whether or not there was enough support for it at the time.
Additional questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, me and Councilman Hammonds have attempted this, and, and I don't think it's lost, I don't think, I think all of my colleagues know since the day I walked in this building, I've been advocating for a charter review commission. And to those that are passionate about the petition on hand, I don't think you'll find a better advocate for term limits than Chris Smith. But I do firmly believe that we can do two things at once. If the charter were to be amended, we would not find ourselves in the situation that we are in right now, because the charter frankly does not address what happens in these situations as it relates to the petition that was brought before us. It's not lost on me, July 6th of 2021. I made a motion and I never got a second based on something that I was told was in the charter that wasn't. It needs to be addressed. And so, I do believe that a charter commission needs to take place. But it doesn't mean that I don't support term limits, because I absolutely do, and I will sit here and I will fight to make sure that the people's voice is heard every single time and twice on Sunday, but we can, we can do two things at once. And so, yes, we have tried in the past, and I'm glad to see that we have consensus now, because I do think that this is in the best interest of Bossier City, and I will always do what I believe is in the best interest of the city, not what's in the best interest of Chris Smith. Thank you.
Additional comments from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the removal of one auto mechanic, one position, and adjustment of salaries for fleet services personnel, and hiring of one auto mechanic to position due to resignation in the fleet services department, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a clerk type, clerk type is two for sewer maintenance division and public utilities, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a sales tax auditor due to a resignation in the sales tax department, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker in the water distribution division for public utilities department, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring and promotion of a recreation maintenance worker two and backfilling any vacancy this may create for Parks and Recreation, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for public works to fill a full-time dispatcher control clerk position in the public works department due to a vacancy and backfill any vacancy this creates, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, to vote upon the adoption of amendments to the current city charter of the city of Bossier City, making application to the state bond commission and providing for other matters in connection therewith, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Hammonds. Questions from the audience?
West Marriott, SOBO Live, 4308 Parkway Drive. Mr. President and esteemed council members, I stand before you with a request that is simple in its essence but profound in its impact. Support the mayor's resolution to place term limits on the ballot. Let's not dance around the matter. The Bossier Term Limits Coalition gathered 2,977 certified signatures from citizens demanding this change. The mayor himself recognized this, and now it's your turn. Don't confuse my brevity for lack of seriousness. This issue is vital to the future of Bossier City. You sit in those comfortable chairs because of the will of the people, and now the people are telling you loudly and clearly they want the option for term limits. Any refusal to put this on the ballot is nothing short of a slap in the face to every voter who put you here. The law is unambiguous. A certified petition from the people requires your immediate action, either pass an ordinance or place a matter on the ballot. To do otherwise isn't a refusal, isn't just a refusal to govern properly, it's a conscious choice to undermine the very democracy that grants you your position. Let me remind you of your obligation to act as representatives, not as autocrats. Upholding the will of the people is not an inconvenience, it's your job. Your role as council members is not to rule over Bossier City, but to serve its residents, a concept you forgot today. So, Mr. President, council members, you have two options. You can continue to defy the people and trample upon the principles that make this nation and the city great, or you can choose to honor the democratic process and support the mayor's resolution for term limits. I understand that there may be some among you, and some who may not be here today, that wish to pursue legal action if this, if term limits are enacted. That's 100% your choice, but you don't have a choice when it comes to following the law. Put the term limits on the ballot and pass this resolution now. Thank you.
Most of my comments are, David Crockett, 653 Dumaine Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. First of all, I just want to say, Mayor, again, I'm going to say it again, thank you for supporting this effort. It's been powerful. I think there's a lot of work to do. I think that, I'm going to say that I believe that doing the charter commission before getting term limits on the ballot is going to flaw any result for the mayor. It's going to be an effort to take power from the mayor, not to give to the mayor. That's for sure. We think about the past. Had we had term limits in the past, would we have had a Link Coleman lawsuit? Would it have, would we have had $30 million out of the city coffers? Could we have had another 200 to 300 million dollar construction project in South Bossier that could meet black, white, Hispanic, all parts of the city? Could we have had that if we had had term limits? I've read the case. I've taken as much as I can out of the courts. That was intentional effect. Three of the people on this council, Mr. President, are still here that voted unanimously in an effort that the city attorney admitted was to ensnare Link Coleman, which resulted in the, the result of that lawsuit. This is something that should have happened years ago. Where is the study for what happened in Link Coleman? What are the lessons learned? I will guarantee you that everybody in this city would vote for term limits. You say that a lawsuit may occur. Is the lawsuit going to be against 70% of the voters who vote for term limits? Who are they going to sue? You gave the people a choice. That is what this is all about. I think that, Mayor, again, I would veto the last, the, the charter commission. I would put one thing first, and that is the will of the people. That's what we expect, that's what we want.
Lee A. Jeter Senior, 400 Columbia Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana. There are many debates about term limits, but term limits provide a range of benefits. It provides fresh ideas from citizens, reduces the influence of special interest groups, increase voter choice, and it promotes legislative courage. We're asking this council today to have the courage to vote for what the citizens have requested, and to know that, you know, if you don't do it, and we're talking about litigation, I'm pretty sure that litigation is going to occur if you don't vote for what the people have already asked. I don't like to waste the city money. Nobody here wants to waste the city's money, because those are all of our taxpayers' dollars. But what we do want, and what we do have an expectation of, is the people that we elected to represent us, regardless of our socioeconomic status, that they're going to represent the will of the people. It takes courage to do that. Sometimes you've got to get outside of your comfort zone. But as term limits promote legislative courage, we're asking today that each and one of you look inside of yourself and have the courage to vote for what the citizens of this great city of Bossier has indicated that they want. Thank you.
Mr. President, David Johnson, 4,600 Block and General Yule, Bossier City, Louisiana. There was a pretty good-sized election back in March of '21 in this town. It was for, for a new mayor, and, or we, what we hoped would have been a new mayor, and we, and we got one, and some city council members. Does anybody here know today how many people turned out and voted in that election? It's approximately 800, or 8,866 people. That was 23%, 23.5%, I believe, of the registered voters, is what I was told by the clerk of court today. Our petition that was signed, and we had over 3,300 signatures, but 2,977 certified, that was over, that was well over 30% of the entire turnout. And take in mind, 8,666 people voted, and you have to ask yourself why only 23.5% of our registered voters in this city voted? I think we, we're tired of being beaten down, talked down to, and having politicians not do what they tell us they're going to do when we vote for them, and quite frankly, I think some of us have just given up and thrown in the towel. We're awake again, and we want to be heard, and our votes, we want them counted. And so, when you look at, at, across the board, when you look at, we've got over 30% of the turnout of the voters that voted back in March of '21 for a pretty good race. I think it stands as clear as you can, I mean, how can it be any clearer what the people want? Over 30% of the entire turnout, we had on our signatures, we turned it in. It's time to start listening to the people, because I guarantee you, at the, at the, at the voting booth, we're going to, we're going to, we are going to show you that we're serious about this, and we want to be heard. Thank you for your time.
Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Well, excuse me. Can I, I like to speak. I like to speak. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Free. The citizens are why we are here. I mean, we're here to serve the citizens. I believe the, well, we should let the citizens have a voice and be put on the ballot, and like y'all saying right now, y'all need to be able to vote.
Mr. Free. Mr. Jacobs, we have before us a certified petition. Whether it's fatally flawed or not, it is a certified petition. Correct?
It is certified at this time, correct.
And so, the clock on that started on July 10th, give or take whatever day it was turned in. So we're 40-something days into the time clock. And we have, we have to call for an election within 90 days. And until that petition is uncertified, correct me if I'm wrong, as a, as a city, we still have a legal obligation as it relates to the city charter. Is that, am I accurate?
You have been presented with a, with a certified petition, and right now you have a certified petition. If, in fact, and again, we've discussed this at length with the council, if the city council chooses not to, uh, place the matter on the ballot, then the city, again, litigation, they would be subject to some type of writ of mandamus. The question then becomes, is that mandamus based upon something that was proper in process? And the court would determine, again, whether or not the, the petition contained the correct language. And the second hurdle, whether the language that was presented to the signatories was in proper form and in a valid amendment to the charter. So if the city council chooses not to act, they would be at risk if a qualified elector of the city of Bossier would choose to file such a lawsuit, then litigation would ensue.
So, I'm, I'm going to just urge my colleagues that we can, we need to move this forward because we do not want to be the cause of litigation against the city. The voters have spoken. I think that they deserve the right to have the final say, and so I'm going to urge that we, uh, vote, vote this favorably. Thank you.
Additional comments from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion fail. Approved parade permit fee waiver for airline high school homecoming parade, October 5th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approved parade permit fee waiver for Parkway High School homecoming parade, October 5th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Reports, Angela Williamson, Finance Director, Month in Finance Report.
Good afternoon, Council. Mayor Chandler. You have before you the financials for the month ended July 31st, 2023. Page one is revenue by fund. The city's currently 27% over budget. The majority of The majority of the increase in general fund revenue is due to an increase in sales tax revenue combined with a decrease in SWP CO franchise taxes and a decrease in traffic signal maintenance revenue from the state due to the timing of the payment which was received in July prior year and June current year. The increase in sales tax and Parkway capital funds revenue is due to an increase in the sales tax revenue current year. The majority of the decrease in EMS fund revenue is due to a decrease in EMS billings compared to July 2022. Page two is expenses by fund. The city is currently 6% under budget. The majority of the decrease in general fund expenditures is due to timing of payroll and transit payments. There was a third payroll paid in July prior year, which was paid in June current year. Payments for two monthly transit billings were made in July 2022. No payments were made in July 2023. The decrease in civic center, civic center expenditures is due to the bathroom remodel in 2022. The majority of the increase in water fund expenses is due to increases in chemicals and electricity for the water treatment plant. The majority of increase in public service and sanitation fund expenses is due to the timing of payments for garbage pickup and right-of-way spraying. No garbage pickup contract payments were made in July 2022 and no right-of-way spraying contract payments were made in July 2023. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is down 5.5% compared to July 2022 because the July DMV collections were received in August instead of July in the current year. The DMV collect, had the DMV collections been received in July, sales tax revenue would be up to 0.3%. Page four is the Manning Report. Six officer positions were added to the budget for the police department. There's one less full-time employee than last month. Full-time employees are 46 under budget. The number of part-time employees is the same as last month and part-time employees are six under budget. Page five is the Water and Sewer Utility Report. Net operating income after debt service for July 2023 has decreased 6% compared to July 2022. Current year-to-date net income has increased approximately 52,000 from prior year and is 8% under budget. On a rolling 12-month basis, net operating income is up 28%. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Ben Rashenpak, Engineering Department, monthly project report.
Good afternoon, council and mayor.
Click the big button.
Big button. Okay. Just a quick overview of what we've got going on in the engineering department. We have over 73 million in ongoing design and construction projects. 63 of that is in construction. Nine projects in design are bid phase, five under construction, and we have seven subdivisions in or nearing the construction phase. The Carriage Way continues to progress ahead of schedule. We're about 51 days ahead percent complete, 75%. And the percent of time elapsed is 66%. The Highway 71 lighting improvements project will probably be off this list hopefully by the end of, by the time we report again next month, they finally got lights. That's the, the poles and the lights that went up. They started going up in earnest a couple of weeks ago and they're just about complete with that. We're working on setting up power service with AEP. Elm Grove ditch improvements, this is a project that got delayed because of the power poles you can see in there. We've been working with various utility companies to get all of that taken care of. I understand we're close to having that closed out and get all of that activity wrecked and cleaned up. Tinsley Park parking improvements, this is a new project. We reported last month that we were getting ready to start construction and we're well underway. We've got about 2% complete. But again, this is just based on the invoicing that they've sent in with about 9% of the time elapsed. And we're just showing, you know, that we're 11 days behind, but really they're, they're very much ahead on that project. They're making a lot of progress. Scott Street drainage improvements, this project receives funding. The last council meeting, we actually secured a bid. We have a contractor that's been issued a PO. This is a picture of what it looked like before. We hope to resolve that with this new project. Y'all allocated about 50,000. The low bid came in just under 25,000. So we're looking forward to getting that done. Private development, these are pretty similar. We do have a project going on that I wanted to highlight, Rocket Fast Access and Utilities. That's a, a car wash that's going in just south of the Circle K right there at the intersection of Benton Road and Viking Drive. You've probably seen that construction going on up there. And the street's drainage, water and sewer going into that will be city assets. Projects in design are out for bid. Lateral B1 drainage improvements. We are still working through the easement acquisition efforts on that. I am told that the appraisals for those will be complete by the end of this week. I spoke with the land man on that this, this afternoon. They're working through the various formalizations of those, so more to come. Hopefully we'll get that behind us soon. Bardo Lane and Montgomery Lane drainage improvements, that's the concrete ditch there that runs between, say, Two Johns and the railroad track. We've secured 11 right-of-entry agreements. We're currently working on two easements. Plats were prepared and completed today. We expect the appraisal information, appraisals to start later this week, early next week on that project. Citywide street improvements, I have the plans for the asphalt project on my desk. I'm reviewing those and we hope to have that set for bid here in the next couple of weeks. Golden Meadows, that US 71 turn lane, Civil Design Group's working on that. They're continuing to coordinate with DOTD, making progress with that. Barksdale Boulevard lighting project, again, that's waiting on the power company. We pressed, that's the area there by Full of Love, we pressed AEP on that. And what I'm told is they're struggling with the railroad, getting, getting rights to get in there and do work there and in that property. So barring, you know, that hurdle, which can be a pretty big one, we expect that to be going well. The Barksdale North Gate improvements, y'all allocated $60,000 for that. We actually engaged Civil Design Group to help us with the geometry out there. They're wanting to do some interesting things at that gate. We're trying to get that done quickly. They're actually on site right now taking some additional measurements and we'll be sitting down with them later this week to get something wrapped up and moving. Hopefully be under construction before October 1st is our, our plan on that. And then the city hall security upgrades, I added that to the list. They're about 50% complete with preliminary plans. And once we get those in hand, we'll be setting a meeting with the council and the various stakeholders here in the building to kind of review that in more detail. Any more questions related to that? Thank you all.
Thank you, Ben. Mayor?
Right now, you know, we're going through the budget for next year and everything. I want to thank Mr. Hammond and you, Mr. Free, and you, Mr. Smith, for coming up to the, my conference room and going over it and going over, you know, getting to hear y'all's views and stuff like that. I don't know about the other guys, I guess they're talking to other people, I don't know. But, but I appreciate all y'all for doing that, okay? And I thank all y'all and the citizens and hope that one day we can get this thing on the ballot so y'all can vote for it. And I want to really appreciate y'all.
Meeting adjourned.